Welcome to the Indian Trail Town Council meeting for Tuesday, July 27, 2021. This time, if everyone would please stand for the National Anthem as I call this meeting to order. Uh, Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, if you'd remain standing for a moment of silence, and if you would, please say a little prayer for the family of the little girl shot this past week in Monroe in a drive-by. Okay, at this time, are there any additions or de— well, Mr. McIntyre, are you here with us?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, and for your information, the rest of the council is here and present and accounted for, okay?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. At this time, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, we have—we want to remove from the consent agenda item 8M, as in Mary, Union County Edge Agreement. We are required by the statutes to hold a public hearing, which we will hold at your next meeting, and then approve the agreement. And we would like to add consent item 8O—or 0, or O as in Oscar—which is an NCDOT Request for Abandonment Resolution SR-2 for the Ashland subdivision.
Okay, council, I'll need a motion for that. What he just said, just go ahead and make the motion. Mr. Coens made the motion. By show of hands. And Mr. McIntyre? They were all in unia—in favor of it? He's on mute? Or he muted himself? Marcus?
I—I approve.
Okay, thank you. That vote's unanimous. Okay.
Yes, sir, I approve.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other further changes to the agenda, I need a motion to approve the amended agenda. Mr. Morse made the motion. Mr. Head? Mr. Coen? Mr. Barber? And Mr. McIntyre? Marcus?
Approve.
Okay. For Mr. Market—for Mr. McIntyre's convenience, I'm going to call a roll for all motions. Okay, so that brings us to presentations. First is Citizen of the Quarter presentation. Sarah, are you here?
I am.
Well, then, come on up. Hello.
Hello, friends.
This is Sarah Lantigua.
Nailed the name.
What?
Nailed the name.
Nailed the name?
Nailed it. It's usually Lantu-lu-lu-lu.
I am not doing that, thank you. But I nailed it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I have fun names in my family, too, thank you. Congratulations, Citizen of the Quarter.
Thank you.
Definitely overdue. You've done so much through the years for this community. Your volunteer work with events and other activities throughout the town, your scholarships, your union talent contest. Thank you. Well-earned, well overdue. This is our Citizen of the Quarter. Do you come up for our second quarter, 2021? So, come on up. I'll make sure she gets my good one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, there was something to read. Wait a minute, I have something to read for you. I didn't know I did. So, come on back up here real quick. Okay, compassionate, selfless, dedicated, kind. Those are just a few words family and friends use to describe Sarah Lantigua. There you go. When nominating her for Citizen of the Quarter. Sarah, who owns Lante Music Art— Performing Arts with her husband Pedro, has lived in Indian Trail for past 10 years. Originally from New York City—from the New York City area, the couple moved to the area to escape the cold, start fresh, and raise a family. They have two sons, Tiago?
Tiago.
Tiago.
Vitor.
Vitor. Thank you. Sarah, who has a background in music education and special education, started her career teaching in public and private schools before opening her studio in New York. She took a year off after moving to Indian Trail before subcontracting with several private and charter schools, including Metroline and Christian Academy, which turned into a full music position. Two years later, she opened Lante Music— Lante Performing Arts. The studio continues to work with local—with local private charter and preschools by providing music lessons and after-school enrichment opportunities. After her studio—at her studio, Sarah and her staff offer private music lessons, summer camps, theater classes, and production, acting classes, and a special needs program for children and teens. In addition to classes, Sarah, her staff, and students find ways to give back to the community through Lante Love projects throughout the year. Past projects have included collecting socks for the homeless, participating in Operation Shoebox, holding coat drives, and more. They also partner with the Sandbox, participate in Indian Trail events, and collect donations for local organizations such as Common Heart. They also collaborated with the town to create the first annual Union's Got Talent. We are not just teaching music. We are teaching our skill— teaching our students skills that will help them be successful in life, confidence, kindness, and a desire to give back. At Lante Performing Arts, everyone always has a place to belong. We have amazing teachers, students, and families that are making Indian Trail a better place by sharing their passion for the arts and commitment to their community, said Sarah. Indian Trail appreciates Sarah's dedication to her students and her town and is honored to name her Citizen of the Quarter for the second quarter of 2021. Now, everyone can clap.
Thank you.
That was my bad, sorry, Sarah. That brings us to our recognition of new business, Kimberly's Place. Come on up.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for having us.
This is where we give you a minute.
Okay.
One.
Oh, whoa.
One minute to speak. Yeah, I can already tell that's going to be a problem. Tell us about your business, where you are.
Somebody already said, "Could you speak?" Yeah, you have to tell me when to stop talking.
Oh, I think I'm afraid.
No, you'll be okay.
Okay.
You'll be okay.
Good, tell us where you're at, what you do, and where you located, hours, etc.
Yeah, first, we want to say thank you. We appreciate— Indian Trail has been so welcoming for us. We are located at 115 Unionville Indian Trail Road in Little Building B2, so right—right beside the Union County Public Library. Our—we're mainly online, but we do have office hours where we're in the off—
Time's up. Just kidding.
Where we—we have office hours Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays for anybody who wants to make an appointment. We started actually as a small boutique, and it just grew bigger. And how we started was we had a good friend, she was a teacher at Indian Trail Elementary, and she actually passed away with mental health issues December of 2020. Our office is her original studio, so her name is Kimberly Lynn, and we started Kimberly's Place. She used to love to be able to—all of us to come and hang out with her. We are her crazy room moms and owners of Kimberly's Place.
Mentee. And a good family friend of hers.
Very good. Well, if you come up here, on behalf of the council and the town of Indian Trail, we'd like to welcome you with a small token.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thing to hang on the wall. Welcome you to Indian Trail, and wish you many years of blessings, good luck, and success.
Thank you, Senator.
Oh, more pictures.
One picture.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Are you in communication with him?
Yes.
Does he wish to be—so he's going to be part of the meeting? Does he want to be recused from the vote?
Mayor, yes, he will—he will participate, but because the internet is spotty, then he—he is actively not in the meeting completely, so we are just—
By not being recused, is votes automatically a yes?
Uh, no. If he's not present in the meeting, then it's no vote.
But still, if he's not voting, still, he can't just—
If he can hear the question and he can respond, then it's a yes. If he cannot hear the question and he cannot respond, then it's—he's just not present.
Can't hear us at all? Okay, we'll continue for now.
Mayor, if we can't hear him, then he would not be considered present for purposes of voting.
Okay.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. All right, that brings us for recognition of July 4th Parade float winners. Mr. Kramer.
A round of applause before we get started, that's a—that's a first. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nice—to be before you this evening. You know, I say it once, I say it under times, it's—it's an honor and privilege to work for Indian Trail. You know, one of our jobs in Park and Rec is to bring the community together, and, you know, honoring Citizen of the Quarter and—and a great, you know, phenomenal business behind us is—is just part of that. You know, July 3rd marked our first event back since the 2019 Christmas Parade. I have to say that the community, I think, was ready for it, and it was truly a community—community event. Lions Club helped out with the lineup, you know, can't do it without them. Union West Rotary judged the parade. Our staff was spread over, you know, the mile and a quarter. Captain James and his staff kept everyone safe. We had EMTs from all of the local fire departments on staff. You know, that's a—that's a huge community showing on that, and likewise, the parade doesn't happen if people don't go down the streets, you know? So, those are local businesses, local organizations, and folks of that nature. Without them, we—we don't have a parade. So, truly, this is a community event, and we're—we're honored to host it. So, with that said, four folks, four organizations were—were chosen by the Union West Rotary Club. Let me say that again, the Union West Rotary Club chose this, so if you didn't win, don't—don't come at us. But no, we—we appreciate them. So, what I'm going to do is I'll—I'll call one winner, if they can come up. We'll take a quick picture, Abby, if that's all right? And then, we will hold all applause until all—all the winners are recognized. So, first winner up is the Best Walking Group. They were represented by Roar Taekwondo, so I don't know if Master Sinundra or anyone from Roar Taekwondo is in the audience this evening. They said they were going to come, don't worry, we'll get it to them. Second up, we had True Fleet. True Fleet was nominated and won for the Most Spirited, so I think they won the loudest horn honking competition, right? Perfect.
Thank you.
Anytime, anytime, come on up, snag a picture. We practiced. Thank you. And then, the last person that we have here, I got a call a couple days before the parade from this man named Razzle the Clown. I wasn't really sure what to expect, you know? But Razzle was—a was a new addition for us. I think he also won the award for most times up and down the parade route, about four or five, on a unicycle nonetheless, and then came through at the end with—with the Roadrunner and Wile E. Coyote Mobile, which was—which was pretty cool as well. So, Razzle the Clown won Most Creative for—for this year's parade. Nice to see you again. Thank you very much. Absolute honor. Thank you. Can you say that? Hopefully, he's—hopefully, he's a regular for both July 4th and Christmas, if we can—if we can pressure him into it. 704 Church also won the—the most use of red, white, and blue. Unfortunately, it had a prior obligation, but we will make sure that we get these awards then. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, congratulations to all the winners. Next up is a Park and Rec Recognition Proclamation. Whereas parks and recreation programs are integral—are are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the town of Indian Trail, whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. Whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. Whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. Whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. Whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetable buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. Whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for our children and adults to connect with nature and recreate—recreate outdoors. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, whereas the town of Indian Trail recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, and now therefore be it proclaimed by Michael L. Alvarez, Mayor of the town of Indian Trail. Do hereby proclaim that July is recognized as Park and Recreation Month in the town of Indian Trail, duly adopted this 27th day of July 2021. That brings us to Town Hires Not Yet Recognized by Council. Ms. Warner?
Good evening, Council. I promise I'm not going to be up here for a long time with a 80-page personnel document or asking for any money or raises for anybody. I'm here for a reason that I think is very exciting. My favorite part of my job is hiring new employees. I'm sad tonight because none of them were able to be here—to be recognized, but I have put together a presentation for all of you. We will be having a all-staff meeting in the future sometime in August, and you will be invited, and hopefully, at that time, you'll be able to meet them in person. But I'm just going to briefly introduce you to them over a presentation and give you kind of a brief bio of the seven new hires that we've hired during COVID. Typically, we would bring them in quickly and introduce them to you, but because of COVID and us trying to keep everybody safe, we haven't continued that practice. So, without further ado, I will introduce you to our new hires. Oh, I've got the clicker, sorry. Hopefully, I don't mess this up. Got it the wrong way. Oh, I told you I'd mess it up. First up is Brian Johnson. He moved here from Canton, Ohio, and began working with us in October of 2020. He previously worked as a foreman for various property services and was also an industrial Next, we have Mike Laney. He lives in Union County and previously worked for Ready Mix Concrete, and he is an owner-operator of a lawn service, and he began working with us in February of 2021. And then, we have Cody Norris. He began working with us in February of 2021, and he previously worked for Cabarrus County, so we feel like we—we stole him from Cabarrus County. He was a maintenance and grounds crew worker there. Then, we have Nate Moyer, who began working here in March of 2021. He moved here from New York and was a landscape foreman for several years prior to be moving here with us. And we also have Stephen Price, who began in May of 2021. He lives in Union County and previously worked as a cemetery specialist and a machine operator. Cemetery service specialist, I'm sorry. And then, we have Joseph Waller, who recently joined our team in June, and he worked as a custodial supervisor at Mecklenburg County Courthouse, and he also worked as a custodian at CMS. So, you may have already met him or seen him, but he's doing a great job. And last, we have Julie Swan. She's our most recent hire, and she started two weeks ago. She was not able to be here tonight because she was not feeling well, but she moved here from Virginia, where she was born and raised in Richmond, and she recently graduated with her bachelor's degree from Virginia Tech with Urban Affairs and Planning. So, those are our new hires, and, you know, we're very happy to have them with us, and I hope they see her for a long time, and if you see them, welcome them, and hopefully, some of them will be able to come to the next meeting, or at least you'll be able to meet them at the all-staff meeting. Any questions?
Thank you, Carrie.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Before y'all approve the consent agenda—
We did that already. Oh, we're not up to that? Nope.
Okay.
Sorry, that's on the back.
Yeah, let me—before we give the law enforcement report, we do have a slight correction on the consent agenda whenever we get to that item.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. This time, I'm going to open public comments. For the record, you have three minutes to speak. Please keep all comments addressed to the whole county and no derog—nothing that we deem derogatory. I will call Robert Roth.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I live in Bonterra Village, and I'm on the Homeowners Association. I'm on the board, and I'm here to request the council consider changing or modifying or clarifying the leash laws. And let me explain why. Recently, we had a resident that complained that she was jogging, and there was a dog that appeared to be loose from his owner, and she was scared because it was a good-sized dog. When she asked him to put it on a leash, he said, "Don't worry, it's under control, it's under command." Well, she didn't know what that meant, and she had confronted him a couple of times about this. Eventually, she ended up calling either the sheriff or the police, I'm not sure which, and they came and talked to the gentleman, and he said, "Well, he had an electronic leash." And in—in my view and in the view of a lot of people, if you cannot—how do you know that there's a leash there in the first place? It could be inoperable, it could be turned off, it could break, the batteries could—could die, the dog may ignore it, and the person that is walking has no confidence that that dog is truly under control. And so, it would help our Homeowners Association if we had a clarification of that leash law so that electronic leashes are not considered a leash, so that we can have better control of the pets. That's—that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I got a comment real quick.
Okay, well, wait, we—we're going to get to that in a second. Now, we got public com—now, we got council rebuttal. Well, you're up, go.
Is that true? That's all I want to say, is that a truth, is that a fact? Clarify what you— Electronic leashes are—are legal. Do you know?
Under the ordinance, yes. They classify under the ordinance. I'd be glad to talk about that during my report if you'd like.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to—
Oh, no, you were up anyway, closing public comments, you was the only one up.
I'm up?
Then, you got your counsel—you already used your time. Sorry.
I've done it.
Any other council feedback other than Mr. Coen?
Okay, well, if we could, Karen, does that—does that make—does that true? Or is it—what if I said I had a mental leash, and that was mentally, that tells the dog, would that be—would that—
Then, we take you away.
The—the requirement in our ordinance is specifically mentions the—the owner must restrain the dog, and then it gives examples of restraint, which include a leash fence, invisible fence, or similar item. And it's that—that language, "similar item" to invisible fence, that we—that I believe makes an e-collar, they're called, inclusive. And so, if—it'd be absolutely up to you all to clarify that if you want—if you do believe a change is ready that are necessary.
Should we can clarify that and say it?
Yeah, I—I believe you have to amend the ordinance.
So, maybe we could put a voltage maximum. Hmm, anyway, no, anyway, probably wouldn't want to do that.
Yeah, it would be, like I said, it would be an amendment to the ordinance, but it would not be a challenging rewrite or text amendment that we could—we could draft and specifically exclude those if that's the way the council wants to go, or include them, if anybody wants to do more research on the validity and the practical—the practi—the how practical those really are, and if they do work or not. I don't know—I don't know the answer to that.
It's my understanding you're currently looking into that? Ms. McLaurin?
Let us look into it and then report back to council.
Okay, thank you. Is that acceptable, Mr. Roth?
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Thanks, Karen. Okay. Ms. McLaurin?
Yes, sir. On 8O, as in Oscar, when I read it out, I said the Ashland subdivision. I should have said Indian Trail Road in the title, just a minor correction, but I wanted to make sure the record was clear. Otherwise, everything else is the same.
Okay. All right. At this time, I'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Cohen's made the motion by show of hands.
The record showed that was unanimous. Brings us to old business, Old Monroe Road, release of funds. Ms. McLaurin?
At your last meeting, you wanted an update from NCDOT. Detailed update was sent to Todd on Friday. I forwarded it to you and all of the council yesterday. The update appears to be adequate. I have heard no questions from any board member or any concern. I think the board is ready to process the payment. The check has been written. We're waiting for an invoice, and the last step we need is a motion and vote to authorize the release of the funds upon receipt of an invoice.
Any questions? If not, we'll need a motion to release the funds upon receipt of an invoice. Anyway.
I'll make that motion to release the funds upon—
Receipt of an invoice, and the state is putting that together.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Morse made the motion. All in favor? Records stand, it was unanimous. Brings us to discussion items, solid waste RFP update.
I approve as well.
Ah, you're back. Abby, you lied. Welcome back, Marcus.
But I approve.
Okay, good. All right, now I know you're back. You can hear me okay, Marcus?
Thank you. I can hear you, sir.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to discussion items, solid waste RFP update.
How are y'all doing this evening? That's right, it's me. So, now, I'm going to read the RFP line by line for y'all so that we can fill in tonight's time.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Just wanted to come back really quick and give a very, very brief update, just to let y'all know that we are following through with the process like we talked about that we were going to do. First four items on there, we've already done. We have heard from three of the roughly five vendors that we know are in the area that they are interested in bidding on the RFP, so that's good to have only had it out for a week, and they've already reached out and said that. We've made contact with Union County to kind of start talking through some of their rates for the landfill in Union County if they—if our vendor was to choose to use their landfill. We've also, as we talked about, we've reached out to Waste Connections, which is our current vendor, and we're still working through a couple of things with them, trying to set up a meeting, going back and forth a little bit with some negotiations. One thing I did want to mention tonight is Pam Good came with me tonight, and Pam is who all of the RFP stuff is going to be going to, so— Town hall and our office on Black Drive. And then we'll have our tent set up there, the National Night Out, to take them as well.
Okay, supplies, okay.
Can you accept just cash donations or checks?
I'll make that work. Yeah, I sure will. We'll make it work, and we'll pick them up.
Any other question? Thanks, Karen. Okay. Ms. McLauren?
Yes, sir. On 8:00, it was an Oscar. When I read it out, I said the Ashland subdivision. I should have said Indian Trail Road in the title. Just a minor correction, but I wanted to make sure the record was clear. Otherwise, everything else is the same.
Okay. At this time, I'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Cohen's made the motion by show of hands. As the record shows, that was unanimous. Brings us to old business, Old Monroe Road, release of funds. Ms. McLauren?
At your last meeting, you wanted an update from NCDOT. Detailed update was sent to Todd on Friday. I forwarded it to you and all of the council yesterday. The update appears to be adequate. I have heard no questions from any board member or any concern. I think the board is ready to process the payment. The check has been written. We're waiting for an invoice. And the last step we need is a motion and vote to authorize a release of the funds upon receipt of an invoice.
Any questions? If not, we'll need a motion to release the funds upon receipt of an invoice. Anyway.
I'll make that motion to release the funds upon...
Receipt of an invoice. The state is putting that together.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Morse made the motion. All in favor? Record's in. It was unanimous. Brings us to discussion items, solid waste RFP update.
Abby, he approves as well.
Ah, you're back. Abby, you lied. Welcome back, Marcus.
Well, I approved.
Okay, good. All right, now I know you're back. You can hear me okay, Marcus?
Thank you. I can hear you, sir.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to discussion items, solid waste RFP update.
How are y'all doing this evening? That's right, it's me. So now I'm going to read the RFP line by line for y'all so that we can fill in tonight's time.
That'd be wonderful. Thank you.
No. Just wanted to come back really quick and give a very, very brief update, just to let y'all know that we are following through with the process like we talked about that we were going to do. First four items on there, we've already done. We have heard from three of the roughly five vendors that we know are in the area that they are interested in bidding on the RFP. So that's good to have only had it out for a week, and they've already reached out and said that. We've made contact with Union County to kind of start talking through some of their rates for the landfill in Union County if our vendor was to choose to use their landfill. We've also, as we talked about, we've reached out to Waste Connections, which is our current vendor, and we're still working through a couple of things with them, trying to set up a meeting, going back and forth a little bit with some negotiations. One thing I did want to mention tonight is Pam Good came with me tonight. And Pam is who all of the RFP stuff is going to be going to. So she's going to be running that show as stuff starts coming in. She's going to be filtering all that, putting it all together. And then we'll come back, and she'll probably do the presentation back to council on that when we're ready to go down that road. It's going to allow me to focus on a few other things that we've been needing to do. Other than that, we're here with any questions?
Just one.
Yes, sir. That have already reached out?
Yeah.
Waste Manage? I'm okay? Before I finish this? Okay. Nope. You're good. Uh, yes.
Yeah, then let's not talk about it. Okay.
Whoops.
That's fine. As soon as I got ready to say it, I was like, "Let me check."
Well...
Any other questions?
Nope. Thank you, Adam.
All right. Thank y'all.
That brings us to the Fall Festival update. Mr. Kramer?
I brought some work in a folder back there, but we're flying through. So nice to see you all again. Wanted to give you an update on what we were calling the Fall Festival. There are several items that need to align for this event to occur. These include our staffing, date availability of the facility, fireworks, rides, and shuttles. As you know, our vision is to provide a memorable experience for the community. With that vision, we need to ensure that we produce and execute an event that's well-thought-out, executed at the highest level, marketed to the community. With the uncertainty of the new COVID variant and other things, we have made the decision to change our plans, our initial plan, for the August 28th event and transition more to a concert with a heavy food presence and beverages. We're exploring some additional options for shooting off fireworks sometime, hopefully, this year. And once that conversation and contract is executed, we'll come back to council and give that update. On another note, as Captain James mentioned, our National Night Out is a week from today. So in addition to water balloons and dunk tanks, we'll be serving hot dogs. We're working with our friends down at the Snowball Cabin as well, handing out snowballs and looking forward to dunking some deputies, throwing some water balloons at the mayor, and just truly bringing the community together in support of the Union County Sheriff's Office. In addition, we've released our 2021-22 event schedule. So if anyone has any questions or would like to sign up to be a vendor or be at the event for kind of Q and A for the community, please let us know. Other than that, answer any questions that you may have. Yeah, absolutely.
I didn't quite understand you. Are we having fireworks or we not having?
Not in August. So several things have to...
Worked out by saying fireworks, da-da-da-da, and then you said no.
Sure, sure. So the original intent was to offer fireworks. With us coming a little late to the game because we didn't know what was going to occur, several things had to come in line. And if those things don't come in line, there's not a successful event. So part of those is securing fireworks. Part of those is having adequate staffing. Part of that is finding a shuttle vendor that understands, you know, are we masking or are we not masking? Are we staffing those buses to make sure that masks exist on those buses and things like that? We're a month out, and everything is not there. So instead of saying, hey, let's just rush through this and do this, that's not the style that I want to put forward. So we're looking at another possible event to shoot fireworks off in the 2021 year. But want to make sure that the event, when we shoot them off, is executed properly so that everyone is able to enjoy.
Hayden, let me add a comment.
Sure.
David, we did not find out until the last day or so as to whether even the fireworks would be delivered from China. I think that's where they come from. So what we are looking at right now, and once we firm up a date, we'll certainly let y'all know, is maybe tie it in as part of Christmas because it'll start to get darker earlier. Maybe as a part of the tree lighting, you know, we shoot the fireworks at that time. So we promised you fireworks, and we'll deliver it, sir.
Me too.
I promise you, you're going to get some fireworks.
Yeah, absolutely. But we're looking to host kind of like a beach music concert over at Chestnut. You know, again, we have some dollars in the budget. We want to continue providing those services to the community, but also balance being a good steward to the taxpayers' dollars and what their expectations are. Are you offering to sing? Absolutely.
Thank you, Hayden.
Absolutely. Thank you, everyone. Dismissed too early.
What day is the Fall Festival?
So right now is scheduled for August 28th. So again, that... I don't want to call it Fall Festival. That's kind of where...
Well, it's in the summer.
But anybody can adjust that calendar for us. So again, when we were looking at things, you know, Crooked is booked with baseball and softball tournaments that are booked in, you know, December for the following year. So we don't feel right kicking someone out and, you know, ruining that revenue stream and then pulling, you know, 20-plus tournaments. With that, the only true venue to host the event is across the street. Obviously, we're sharing parking, and parking is at a limited and a premium. So when Carolina Courts is hosting something, you know, typically not an issue because we're hosting as well. But to put rides in a parking lot, that parking lot has to be completely empty for the day. So when we talked to Carolina Courts, we said, "What are your open available dates?" And they came back and said, "August 28th or nothing." You know...
So to clarify, the fireworks are a no and the events a definite maybe.
So fireworks are a definite no.
Just want to make sure we got a clarification.
Yes, yes. There will be an event that day. We're working with our music vendor, if you will. So... But definitely fireworks at some point, even if I have to go shoot them off myself.
Nice presentation, anyway.
Thank you.
Carrie, did you have something? Oh, okay. Mike? Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone.
Manager's report?
Four quick items. I've heard from many of you about our last budget season that we wrapped up. And many of you, I think, were pleased with the process that we went through. And we did a great deal of outreach to the public, both from the video and from the five minutes in Indian Trail. But there was a piece that we left on the table that we agreed we wanted to come back sometime this summer and begin to take a look at. And that is the capital investment program. And so Jim and I have been doing some work. Primarily, Jim has been doing the heavy lifting and has looked at those items and identified funding sources. And so what I wanted to do is get the board's feedback on how we want to take the next step of taking a look at that and deciding what items we want to look at. Now, one of the things I want to mention to you is a non... A capital investment plan is a non-binding plan, but it does give you some sort of roadmap of where we think we're going. And it can, of course, change with time. Three of you gentlemen have chosen not to run for reelection, and we're going to have three new members. But my experience, it is important to keep the city moving forward. So I just wanted to see if anybody had any thoughts as to how we wanted to do that, whether we wanted to have a special workshop or just if anybody had any thoughts on that. Or I can...
I'll give you some thoughts on it. I had thoughts, but... If I looked at the ballot, there's a number of people that's run three or four times already. So I really don't know if they need that process. And then I know, is there anyone else in here other than Tom?
Yeah.
Tom? Oh, there's... Your name, sir?
Kay Baskler.
I'm sorry?
Kay Baskler.
Okay, okay. Well, nice to meet you, Captain. If it's okay, I just... Do you think something like that would be useful? Either one of you?
That's the question.
One of the things, if I could add, David, we're already thinking about the budget process next year. And so if you feel like you would like to have some sort of workshop where we come together, kind of like we did for the strategic planning, where we have an hour, hour and a half to kind of walk through and identify, yeah, we think we'd like to do these kind of things, that would help us get some traction for at least that part of the budget as we start to swing around next year. Because as the city grows and changes, the issues are going to get more complex than they were, say, even just three years ago. And it looks like Todd Barber has a question or something.
Well, I just, you say non-binding. That's kind of like getting direction from your wife, and you ain't going to listen. But anyway, the... So, you know, I guess my thinking is, kind of when it's non-binding, is that a waste of time? I don't know. I mean, you know, I understand setting goals and priorities and trying to get some things. And personally, is, I don't care if these guys are running for reelection or not. I think if we're planning it, we need to plan it. So I would be for moving forward because next council can always, like you said, change the direction. If they want to, they've got that authority. But, you know, but that way, with the ones here now not running, you get the benefit of their input and future counsel. So it's kind of a win-win to me if you do it now, too.
Okay.
I think my explanation of how it works, you know, I think I'd rather have exposure going in than O.J.T. and then doing all the law. You know, I think I'd like to be familiarized with what I'm going to be doing. So I think I would go for it personally.
So my recommendation would be to go ahead and have a workshop and then invite those...
And anytime that a quorum of this board comes together to discuss town business, it's automatically a public meeting. So we would notify the public. Okay? I think Jerry was getting ready to say something.
Yeah, I agree with that and with what Mike had to say. And I've kind of mentioned this before. It would have been beneficial to myself to have listened in on budget workshops or if there would have been a capital investment vehicle at that time. And with three of us leaving, and if you don't want to lose that momentum, I think it is vitally important to have them sitting in on it so that they can be up to speed.
Okay. And, you know, for our new members, we'll do a pretty solid orientation. But so noted. And Mr. Mayor, unless there's any objection, I'll ask Kathy to reach out to the board, and we can schedule some time. Do you have any thoughts, Mr. Mayor?
No.
You're good?
I'm good.
Okay. David?
No, I just wish I would have known about this before the meeting.
Oh, okay. I'm not looking for a real commitment right now, just trying to get an angle.
That's fine. I didn't quite understand your answer, but I think you were right, too.
Yeah, I might go ahead and go a couple seconds.
Okay, that's fine. All right. We haven't forgot about the American Rescue Fund. We've recently received notification that we'll be getting, I think, a total of $13 million over two years. Just to remind you, you need to have your plan in by 2024 and have it obligated by 2026. You've heard of the various categories. We'll be meeting with staff and then roll out some recommendations to the board. I've heard from some of you already. But before we move forward with any formal plan of action, we'll get your authorization as to how you want that money spent. Okay? COVID is, we're watching COVID daily, more than several times throughout the day. We have been very cautious up until this date, pretty much the way we have operated. If any employee is near anyone that has COVID, we send them home for two weeks. We require the test. We've been very pleased with our success in that effort. But, you know, we may at some point go back to mask and alternate means of meeting. I'll keep you informed as to where we are with that. The last thing, I think Carrie touched on it. I am approaching a year here, and we haven't, because of COVID, had a chance to really have an employee meeting with the town manager. First few days I was here, we did that. So we're going to be scheduling something in August, somewhere around the 19th, give or take. We will open it up with breakfast. We would certainly like to have all of you there. If you would like to be there to meet some of the employees that you've seen tonight and if you would like to give any greetings to the employees. I can tell you, based on 40-something years of work doing this kind of work, you have a very, very good set of employees. You have a very dedicated set of employees that do the job and represent your interests and serve the citizens well, and you should be proud. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, unless there is questions. Those are our questions.
Any questions?
We're setting it up, okay? We're looking some... Todd, we're looking somewhere around the 19th. We were going to try to do it earlier this month, but it didn't work out. We'll give you several weeks' notice on it. It'll be, we're shooting for Thursday. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McIntyre, if he's still there?
I'm there, ma'am.
Your turn.
You're calling on me for public comments?
Yeah, for council comments.
Yeah, I... Did you technical this? Did you technical this? Thank you.
All right.
Did you get that? I will have none.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on. Mr. Hud?
Well, thanks for everybody coming. And heartened by all of you, members of the town staff. Jerry, thank you. And looking forward to meeting everyone down the road. Good meeting. And everybody, you're up, one sec.
Mayor Alvarez?
Oh, that leaves me second, third. Well, again, good meeting. Thanks, Mr. McLauren, for everything, staff. Don't forget, National Night Out next week. Bring some school supplies. Let's help out the Union County Sheriff's Office. And I want to thank council and everyone for their prayers. For the first time in six years, I am officially cancer-free. So we will take one day at a time and see where life brings me. But thank you, everyone, for all your help and prayers through the past long six years. That's it, everybody. Have a wonderful evening. Drive home safe, and God bless.
Mr. Morse?
Excuse me. Congratulations, Mayor, on being cancer-free, and that's all the comments.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Again, good, congratulations, buddy. That's great news. Thanks for everybody coming, and I hope to see you next time.
Mr. Barber?